And you're up.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Towalton City Council Meeting of February 24th, 2025. Our first item on the agenda tonight is wedding officiating services. Welcome, Don and Courtney.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Don and I, my name's Courtney Cammer, Court Administrator here at the city, and Don and I are here tonight to ask for your consideration in Towalton Municipal Court performing wedding ceremonies. We have folks come in throughout the year and make phone calls asking if we perform wedding ceremonies here at court, and we, in years past, we haven't, and the judge brought it to our attention that he thinks it would be a great idea with your approval, and so we're here this evening, asking for your consideration.
So, Courtney has called around. There are a number of jurisdictions around us that do offer it, but we still get a lot of calls because they just can't seem to meet the demand. And we do get, it's not a big generator because we're not going to have that many, but we get at least a handful or more a year. And so we thought, since the judge had asked and Courtney was looking into it, we thought we'd see what the council's thoughts, and if they were okay with this going forward, and then we would bring back a fee schedule update would be the action for the council. It would come back to do a cost recovery fee, and we'd bring that back at a later date.
Questions for staff? I guess the one question is, does the judge have the capacity to do it in addition to the other stuff that he's doing?
Yes, he does have capacity, and he has more time as of recent, so that's why he brought up the...
Probably a lot funner responsibility, too.
Yeah. It could make it a little lighter.
Yeah, okay.
And we would set up appointments, and so people could schedule appointments at certain times that would be available.
All right. Any questions? Council Hillier.
Thank you. I'm all for it. I was just curious, why does he have more time? Has something changed, or did he extend hours, or?
He has semi-retired from his private practice, and so that does make him have, he's available more now, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm all for it. It should have been a long time ago. This is such good news, such happy time. Maybe we'll get more traffic now that people will know that we offer as well. You know, that's fantastic.
You just have to buy a whole bunch of those plastic flowers and bells.
We did tell we were going to get an Elvis costume for him, but he wasn't up for that one. But, okay, so we will come back at a future council meeting with an update to the fee schedule to include this fee, and then we'll get it out on our website and so forth, letting people know we offer that service now.
That'd be fun, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. I'd say we're all this easy. All right, that brings us to our Climate Action Plan implementation funding. Sherilyn will make opening statements, and I hand it over to Becky with Echo Northwest.
Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good. Didn't get hit by any lightning, so it's a good day.
I know. It was, yeah, it was a little disconcerting, driving and having all the announcements on the radio.
It was cool. We don't get it that much.
Yeah, like flooding. I saw our guys out scooping out the storm drains and the basins, yeah. So Mayor Bubinick and city councilors, my name is Sherilyn Lambos, of course, and I'm your city manager here in Towalton. The relevance for me giving this introduction tonight is that responsibility for the Climate Action Plan sits in my office. The Public Works team, led by the wonderful Nick Westendorf and Matty Cheek, shouldered the amazing work of developing the plan. And then, once it was adopted last May, I moved it into my office because I believe that having the Climate Action Plan out of the city manager's office gives it greater visibility and highlights the interdepartmental connectedness of this work. We were here in October where you adopted the two-year work plan. One of the actions included in that work plan was to conduct an analysis of options for funding the implementation of this important work. I believe for the Climate Action Plan that you adopted, to be successful, we will need a dedicated resource. This position would have overall responsibility for implementing the Climate Action Plan and would work closely with various city departments, public leaders, regional partners, and of course, the community. I foresee this position being responsible for implementing programs, coordinating activities, developing long-range plans, and engaging with the public. Responsibilities would also include establishing and implementing metrics to measure and track progress and success. So back to the two-year work plan you adopted. The actions there are ones that are being taken on with existing staff in their existing capacity, which is important and absolutely needed, but it's not enough for the Climate Action Plan to truly be implemented and successful in the long run. In order to be strategic and accountable and achieve real progress and success, a dedicated resource is necessary, and we do not currently have that capacity in our organization, nor the ongoing funding necessary to hire an employee for this work. We have partnered with Echo Northwest to conduct an analysis of options for ongoing funding sources for this position and program. Echo Northwest is an industry leader in economic analysis that helps drive public policy, and I'm excited for them to share their work tonight. Ultimately, we are looking for feedback from you about moving forward with one or more of the options so that we can continue momentum in this important work. With that, I will turn it over to Becky Steckler from Echo Northwest, and she will make the bulk of the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Mayor Bubinick and city councilors, I, do I need to push that? There we go. I am Becky Steckler, and I am a project director at Echo Northwest. If you're not familiar with Echo, we do think of ourselves as a public policy firm that is very rooted in economics. We try to help decision-makers such as yourselves make data-informed decisions, and we measure what people care about. I lead our climate practice, and my colleague, James Kim, is in the audience tonight, and he helped me with this analysis and report. And so, just wanted to give you a quick overview of what I'm hoping to talk to you about, build a little bit on some of the background for why we were brought into to do this work, and to talk to you a little bit about how we analyzed and really thought about kind of an evaluation framework for thinking about new funding tools for climate action, show you some of those results, and then finally, really have the discussion and get feedback from the council. And so, really, the purpose here is to hear that discussion and get that feedback on these draft findings, for an opportunity for you to ask questions, and then get feedback on what the next step should be. So, as the city manager alluded to, you did adopt your Climate Action Plan just last year, and there's almost 150 different actions with a really wide range of some very simple to very complex ranges all across the city, in both for capital improvements as well as operations and maintenance. It requires coordination across departments as well as with outside partners, with community members internally. So this is no small lift to do the work that you've identified needs to be done. So, but to do that, there were two things that were at the very start of that, and that is to have that dedicated employee resources, somebody who's really going to be your champion, and kind of pay attention to how everything is being implemented, and trying to facilitate that work and coordination, as well as also starting to think about the funds that are available to actually do the implementation. So Echo Northwest was contracted with to help find those resources and to think about the different kinds of trade-offs, using different, well, call revenue tools, those different kinds of taxes and fees. So, we took a look at the funding tools that the city currently uses. You'll probably understand that it's often easier just to make a small incremental change as opposed to something that's new and very different. So we looked at that. We also analyzed, after taking a scan and looking how other cities across the United States fund their climate action, we looked at, we prioritized six specific tools that seemed to have the most potential to be able to analyze and consider, you know, would they have the funds available to do what you needed them to do. And then, it was important to get that feedback from city council. Oops, there we go. And this is the slide I should have checked. I did want to talk a little bit about the evaluation. I just apologize for the fonts. This is always the fear that I have. Echo Northwest regularly creates funding plans for local governments. And actually, we just published, I think in December, just a couple months ago, for the League of Oregon Cities, a revenue toolkit. So, to really kind of walk through both the whole process about really thinking through how you, you know, really thinking through how to walk through a process of adopting new taxes or fees, and then the evaluation related to that. And so that's what we've really leaned into. So on one hand, any kind of a tool that you're, or fee or tax that you're thinking about using, you want to make sure that it's actually going to raise the amount of revenue that you need. So, is it adequate for the needs that you have, as well as, how easy is it to administrate? So, do you have already the tools and the systems in place? Do you have the people who understand both how to assess the fee? Have you thought through both communicating that as well as bringing it in? Do you have to think about enforcement for any kind of a fee or tax that you put into place? So, thinking about the administrative ease or not. How flexible is the specific fund itself? So, many transportation-related fees can only be used on transportation. Some building fees can only be built, used for those kind of building services. So, understanding those, any kind of restrictions that might be on specific kinds of fees or taxes. And also, stability. Is this something that brings in steady revenue, or is it really volatile based on what's going on with the economy? Those are things you're going to want to know. We also thought about fairness, and so really thinking about who benefits and who pays, and what's the nexus between those. And so sometimes, it's both thinking about and being able to understand, are you treating those payers equitably or equally across the city? On the other side, sometimes you're going to care about for those that have the ability to pay, and those that don't have the ability, or have less of an ability to pay, how are you treating those different populations, and thinking about that. So, understanding what those impacts are is also important. We also considered a nexus between, if you're trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, or you want to become more resilient to climate change, then does the fee potentially, do you tax those impacts higher so that you can invest and mitigate them with how you're investing them? So a good example is, if you are charging more for electricity, or for that franchise fees that I'll talk about, then you can then invest in energy efficiency so that the impact of it, especially for the lowest-income people within the city, have an ability to kind of mitigate that, and you're achieving multiple goals. Also, neutrality, sometimes assessing a tax or fee has unanticipated consequences, or, as we like to say, positive or negative externalities. It tends, when you charge more, it tends to reduce the demand for that particular thing, if you've got more flexibility in whether you can pay for it or not. So, we think through some of that. And then finally, is this something that you're going to support? Is this something that your residents and constituents are going to support? And that political viability is an important conversation to have. And some things feel, to your residents, might feel fairer than others, and so that's definitely one of those kinds of trade-offs. And so, understanding that. And then, communication and being able to talk to folks about those different trade-offs with these taxes and fees is really important. So that was the evaluation that we went through with all of the different ones, and there's two that I want to talk about first, and those are for the two short-term options. And when we first had the conversation with city staff, we were like, you know, let's, in the short term, you need to fund a, one full-time equivalent position, and maybe have some funds available for some modest implementation actions, and also to kind of just build that cushion so that you have consistent funding. And so, one of those options is the half of 1% increase in a right-of-way fee or a franchise fee. And currently, that option we're suggesting would be charged just on electricity, telecommunications, and waste management companies, and we estimated that the revenue would be about $327,000 per year. The second potential fee is a 5% increase on a building permit fee surcharge, and that estimated revenue is about $60,000 per year. I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail. Oh, that's right. So, for the right-of-way fees, or often called a franchise fee, meaning that that's really the same thing, for the arguments for, it definitely did seem that it would be able to fund a full FTE position. And so, that got to our adequacy. It was one of the, one of the better ones for being able to, if that was the only thing you did, you would, should be able to fund that position. It's a relatively small change in the overall tax rate. We estimated that if all the utility fees kind of combined were about $400, that this increase would be a $2 increase. So relatively modest. And then finally, it is sourced from a really broad tax base, so, and you can use it pretty flexibly, so you have some options to probably do most or all of the different kinds of activities within the Climate Action Plan. There are some drawbacks, though, as well. This is a gross revenue tax on the utilities that are operating within your city, and so these can be then passed on to customers and your residents. So it definitely will, in every other example we've seen, it does have an impact on people locally, and it can disproportionately affect lower-income households who spend a larger portion of their income on utilities. So it's important to understand that, that potential impact. And currently, natural gas use, which is definitely has a direct nexus with greenhouse gas emissions, is not part of this tax option, primarily because they are at the top of the cap. The current natural gas utility fee is 5%, and you do not have a franchise fee agreement in place, and it is our understanding that you would have to put a franchise fee in place to be able to go above that amount. So, we really took short-term, literally, that if you wanted to do something fairly quickly, then leaving natural gas out at this point would probably be the best move. But we come back to it later. I keep on forgetting my computer's not attached. Related to the building permit fee surcharge, there's a number of things that are, make this a potential short-term option, and that is, that it ensures that those that are driving new developments also pay for those environmental impacts of that new development, and that, when it comes to political feasibility, residents often like it. When you charge them not as much, this kind of a fee would not be seen as much by existing residents, and it would really go towards the new, either new development and then incorporated into the total cost of that new development. That has also actually implications for some of those arguments against. So, this type of a revenue stream is a lot more volatile, depending on what's going on in the economy, and given kind of all of the impacts on labor, especially thinking about construction labor, as well as potential tariffs and other unknowns kind of on the national scale, it remains to be seen what's going to happen to our building development. So I think that's a potential for even more volatility and kind of unknown. It could also impact the affordability of new buildings, and especially if you're considering affordable housing, it does add an additional cost to all of those developments unless you make some, have some waivers or other waiver fees. Finally, definitely new developers are, developments, new developments may be very sensitive to this change, and the revenue itself would be limited to things that are within the building division. However, emissions from buildings is one of the largest sources of emissions for the city, so it felt like there were still quite a few things you could probably do with this. And I want to pause here. We put our evaluation together, just kind of as a good summary, to show how we saw this as either a high or a medium opportunity for the city. And I'll come back to the slide, but Mayor Bubinick, I wanted to have an option to ask some kind of specific questions, and just related to the reactions to the short-term options, and then if there's any that you prefer, that you see today, and any other kind of considerations or concerns you have.
Okay. Questions for Becky? Council Brooks.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. I, I just want to say, I just got back from Thailand. When I was there, the kids were out of school because there was so much smog in the air that it was dangerous to be outside. And I think I was trying to figure out what it was from when I was there, and then when I realized it was because they don't have, I mean, there's black smoke coming out of people's cars and stuff, and they don't have emission standards. It really went into the reason why. And so, I, I think that, for me, these are both good solutions. And some of my thinking, I think some of the things that we've had difficulty with has been around community development. So I'm curious if, instead of using, utilizing a building permit fee for the overall position, if you started with the overall position with the right-of-way fees, and then looked also into what would it take to franchise, and then finally, look at the building permit fees for some additional capacity in that particular department, the Department of Community Development, because I think, I think that department, I have the sense that department is very taxed anyway, and there would be a strong rationale for why we would want those buildings to be more resilient, and why we want to be a more resilient community, an updated community in the future, especially with the technological business community that we have in the area and the footprint that we're trying to make that way. So those are my initial thoughts. I really appreciate the work, and am also very sad about losing the money that we were supposed to have, and the timeline that we've fallen under, as we've been working on this for a very long time. Thanks.
Council Saka.
Thank you. So with the half percent increase on the right-of-way, where does that put us versus other cities? Do we know?
Council Saka, I hope I pronounced that right. Saka. You know, there are, because so many climate actions cover so many different departments, there are few places around the country that have a, like, this is how we're paying for everything. City of Portland is probably one with their climate, the Clean Energy Fund. So they have a dedicated fund, and you can probably go back and trace directly to that. The city of Denver, city of Boulder, have both passed specific sales taxes to fund climate-related work. There's a handful of places around the country that have, during our research, we found, had that kind of dedicated funding, but I would still say it's a relatively small number. Many cities really look kind of department to department. So here's your Department of Transportation, and they are ensuring, when they're doing upgrades to their streets, that they're really thinking about complete streets and making sure that it includes both automobile traffic as well as low-carbon bike-walk and transit. So it's, and that's just kind of one example. They're looking at how they can really think about their capital improvement plans to include and make it easier to take the low-carbon option. But it's not always separated out in a way that, without kind of more intensive study, you could say, this is how much the city of Tigard is spending on, on climate versus the city of Towalton, for example.
So was your question related to franchise fees of like how we, how we match with other communities and the, how high our franchise fees are?
Yes, but, and I appreciate, and I appreciate, though, that, I guess putting it in context is you can't really compare this apples to apples, that it's hard because there's different funding sources. But I guess I was just trying to understand, you know, if we are, you know, if we are increasing our franchise fee, and that could increase the utility costs, kind of where we already are with our utility costs compared to other cities.
And I'm so, I'm sorry, yeah, I totally misunderstood.
That's right.
We did look at, actually, the city of Milwaukee. They updated their electric and natural gas utility fees, and they went from 5% to 8%. City of Towalton's currently, for electricity, it's 3.5%, and for natural gas, it's 5% currently. So, and the other city that we looked at was the city of Gresham, and they had updated theirs in 2020, and they went on electricity and natural gas from 7% to 10%. So I think it really, you know, every city has a really unique combination of different revenues that they have. So some of it depends on your permanent tax rates, and then how much are you trying to provide city services and at what level, and then how do you kind of cobble it all together using all the different tools that you potentially have. So, from the few of the other cities that we compared locally within the Portland-Metropolitan region, it doesn't feel either where you are right now or where you might go with a half a percent is not wildly different from the other cities that we looked at.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this one's for Sherilyn, is, so is this going to be a permanent full-time position? Is that what we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council Brooks.
I just wanted to comment on the last part of the conversation that I was curious about. When, I mean, I've been to a lot of meetings nationally and heard a lot of different configurations that different cities have for somebody that's a coordinator for this kind of resiliency and climate action work. I'm not saying that there's a dedicated fee or not, but I don't think that this department in this position is a rare thing that's never happened across the country. So I just want to be really clear on that. There's whole, there's a whole committee with people on it from all over the country that meets every meeting for the National League of Cities, so it's not unusual. Thanks.
Other questions? Council Gonzalez.
So, thank you for the information. I was kind of disappointed in the information, and I saw the pros and cons, and so thank you for that. What your report failed to highlight is, what can we do right now? You should have highlighted today's assets in our city, so I'll give you a couple of examples. So, we, as a city, do not have a park maintenance plan to budget for our parks' care. We do not, okay? I wish you would have spoke about that and spoke in detail how we can achieve that right now. You didn't address our failing tree plan that the city does not have, that could be resolved right now without having to create an additional position, another bureaucratic position. You also failed to highlight that there are current low-hanging fruit when it comes to irrigation upgrades that could be offered to our constituents. You didn't talk about that either. That could be done right now. You also, you didn't highlight the inefficient care of our landscape assets as a city, and there's efficiencies that can be done, and I'm in the climate action world, that's in my professional career. And you failed none of those. You didn't address any of those. You failed the high-level federal side of things and funding and creating a new position, increasing our constituents' taxes, which we're all heavily burdened right now. But what was quite noticeable to me is when you say things like, "It will not be seen because we can hide these fees, hide these fees through our building permits." You know, you could have addressed some of these low-hanging fruits that other cities are already doing without having to adopt a climate action plan that increases the taxes of our constituents. And so I was really hoping to see that kind of information in this report because it's things that we can do right now.
I would just interject that the scope of the Echo Northwest did not include the requirements for that.
I, and that's, that's probably a failure because I have been asking for that from the onset. I voted no for that climate action plan because I did not want to increase our constituents' tax revenues, building development costs, and all these other things coming forth. Now, we don't even have sustainable funding for our current assets, but yet we want to increase taxes on various ways or hide them, and then create a new position that I think is unsustainable long-term-wise. So it just means that we will eventually be increasing our taxes again. So it just means that we will eventually be increasing our taxes again because it's not sustainable. If we cannot sustain what we currently have and have had since Tualatin was developed, now we're going to add another process to try to figure out funding. We could, we should first deal with our low-hanging fruit is, what kind of programs can we create? What kind of budgets can we set aside for our parks right now that we have to go out and get grant money to fix our parks? We passed a 25-minute park bond to upgrade our parks and buy new parks. But here, we're trying to create this, this whole new position without sustainable funding that I do see is, it is, I get it and I see it, but I think it's short-sightedness when our current assets right now aren't being taken care of and will not, and still aren't being taken care of. Now, the climate action plan rolls all this up into it because there's like, I think there's many other points, but we should be talking about those right now without having to create something new.
Council President. Brett.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the work you did. I feel that, as important as our parks are, that we need to, that a climate action plan is a bigger thing than that, and we voted on that, and we need to, these are just the first steps in how to move forward, and that's, that's my perception. I had a, this is just my suggestion for short-term and long-term to consider is, kind of like PGE does, if instead, you had it called the utility fee, something called utility fee roundup, but I would suggest maybe something where people could opt in to have like a small percentage paid, like, would you, are you willing to pay .01% for this? And then it would go up with utility fees, and the people that, those of us that really believe in the climate action plan would opt in for that. And I think if we did that sooner or later, it will give us a sense of how much of our population would be willing to participate in that over the long term.
Other questions? Councilor Brett.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm hearing different, and I support climate action, and obviously, but I do agree with Councilor Gonzalez on trying to get, and maybe like Sherilyn said, this was not part of your scope, you know, but a direction for the, for the staff would be like, let's try to find a way first, kind of like what we manage in our home, what can we do now that we can, that we can stop the bleeding or whatever, or like save within our own, like he said, maybe, you know, irrigation, or like try to encourage those things to our, and I think I'm going to direct this to Sherilyn, try to encourage our constituents to participate in this climate action in different ways that they can, that would not add taxes, so, or add any kind of, because even though it's going to do that right-of-way, or you said that it's gross income, so that means that it can be, it can go to our consumers, and that is really going to be hard for our constituents who live in apartment complexes, who are renting, who are already struggling paying their bills and their rent. So I, I wouldn't want that burden because I would, I would love that, okay? We're going to have this fee to PGE, let's just say, but it's not going to roll down to the consumer or our constituents. But we don't know if that's what PGE is going to do or not. So I'm a little concerned about that. I also, so I would like to start from, what can we do as members of this community to participate? And then, once we do that, maybe we can look at other ways, okay, we have reduced, these are some things that people can do at home. Now we can maybe look for funding, but I, I kind of just want to see if we can find low-hanging fruits, like, like Councilor Gonzalez said. I mean, I don't like using that term, but I'm just thinking of like, things we can do as someone that lives here. The, just kind of, those were the things that were just popping, standing out to me, like, what can we do? And I do agree on the survey, I think that's another, that Councilor, is it a survey that you were opting in or opting out?
Just considering adding on to like their water bill, like, where you can opt in. So the people that can't afford it or don't want to do it don't have to, but the people that strongly believe in this.
Yeah, yeah. I like, I like that idea, too. So there's some, some ideas here that might work and not completely taxed our, our companies that are going to really eventually, if they feel tight enough, they would just send it to the consumer, and then that was, that's really going to hurt our constituents. So, thank you.
Councilor Hillier.
Thank you. So I guess what I hear the real question to be is, or the problem that we're trying to solve for is, we do not have a staff person who is in charge of all this to coordinate the low-hanging fruit, to coordinate this, to coordinate that, to coordinate those things. And I don't know about you, but I'd probably want to get paid for that job if I were doing it. And so, we as a body are going to have to find a way, if we are going to prioritize even the low-hanging fruit, to find a way to fund this position. Am I missing something? Is that kind of the crux of what's happening?
Right. I mean, when we came to you in October with the two-year work plan, all the things on that two-year work plan are things that are being accomplished with existing staff, with existing resources in, in the departments. And they're good things, and there are low-hanging fruit, there are street tree inventory, there, I can't recall them off the top of my head, all of them, but, but there's no one to, to guide accountability and set metrics and work with the community and with our partners to pull the whole thing together and to keep it on track. And that would take a resource that we just don't have right now.
And that's what I think I hear the ask is, not, and I hear and understand what's being said, but I think the, what we're trying to solve for at this minute is, what should we come up with? So is the end answered, what are our reactions, what options do I prefer? Well, sure, I'd prefer to find the money some other way, but I don't think, you know, selling, you know, a car wash is going to solve that, for instance, right? So I guess I feel like you've come up with some good options, and I would support either of them. I would like it to have the least impact on our community, and that's where I stand.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask that question as well, the one that, you know, who's going to coordinate this? If this person's going to do that, then I can see the need of that resource. So I meant to, just want to say on record that I also meant to say something like, we need a resource. But I do like to see, you know, more engagement from, to try to see if we can lower costs somewhere and have less impact on our, on our constituents and residents. So, thank you.
Other questions, Congress? Councilor Brooks, and then Councilor Gonzalez.
I just want to say that I agree with a lot of my fellow councilors around the coordinating. I also know that we deal with capacity issues in general, so extra coordination around resiliency and climate, I think, would be a benefit and help the departments feel supported, and also in a way that is connecting the different departments through a certain conversation that has a fundamental in safety and, and just the basics and keeping up with technology. And also, then I want to say that, besides coordination, it also seems like having this particular expertise helps with integrated knowledge, ability to have the most effective outcomes, instead of going low-hanging fruit that might not have any impact at all. If we're really doing something to have impact rather than keep people busy, we need somebody that knows how to measure the impact. And that is also just the basics of government, that we have measurable outcomes so that when we go out to ask for funding, we're not taxing our Parks Department who's managing a 20, you know, who's managing a bond to do those kind of things. My, one question I had around these franchise fees, which I don't have, like, the whole knowledge base on, is, as far as the tipping points, it sounds to me like we're a pretty small city with a pretty small fee right now. I have a hard time imagining that we're going to create the tipping point for them to be charging the whole region more. But maybe I'm missing something, or would they have the ability to just charge Tualatin more fees?
Yeah, Councilor Brooks, thank you so much for your question. It is our understanding that it is, it is really up to the utilities themselves to determine how much of that they're going to actually pass through, but that they usually do. And, like I said, we, you know, doing the math, it looks like it would be roughly a $2 increase if you have a total utility across all the ones that we recommended or analyzed. If you have like a $400 bill, that it would potentially increase your bill by $2, so for that half a percent.
But they set local fees, so they're, I don't know how they, how they manage all their fees, you know, for their entire utility, but, but they, they, we do have a franchise fee and a right-of-way fee for the utility companies that is specific to Tualatin. And that, that fee is what we're recommending to raise by a half a percent, or that we analyzed.
That helps me.
So it would only impact Tualatin, not the region.
Okay. There, the response, because I know when we were doing fees around hooking up for the, you know, the Wi-Fi and things like that, and in general, when we've looked at these fees in the past, we've had, compared to other cities, very, very low fees. I don't think this is a city where we try to overcharge all the time. We're pretty prudent, we have very large prudent reserves, we don't go after trying to gouge our community, and I think this gives us the wiggle room to be able to keep up with the times. And I hope that by implementing something like a climate action plan, that our efficiencies would also build up enough where we would be saving money, and that it would, over the long run, actually be something that ends up paying for itself. To me, that's really the goal, and even if it's just through insurance premiums because we know what we're doing and we're showing things that help whatever, prevent flooding in a floodplain, for instance, which is where I think that our residents would feel the pain a lot more. Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
So outside of asking for the job description of our new incoming team member for the Parks Department, I would think that that person would be the person responsible to kind of help oversee some of this work. Just a quick Google search right now that'd require any kind of expertise to ask, how many acres of trees do we need to suck up the carbon that our 27,000 population in Tualatin takes? 39 acres. It wasn't that hard, that information's already out there. We just need somebody to say, let's get a good tree robust program up, let's get that going first, and that should take care of our carbon footprint for our 27,000 people. But if we were trying to eliminate what's going on on a national scale, like gas and other things, adding more electric cars and things like that, then I get it, you need an advocate on the inside to move those levers. But if we're truly trying to deal with our own carbon, well, I think Tualatin, I don't remember how many acres Tualatin is, but we're right next to like Oswego, we're right next to Sherwood, we have all these wetlands. I can surmise that I'd say maybe 29,000 acres would take care of Tualatin alone. Simple. This information's already out there, we don't need a consultant for that. But I would think a person who's coming in now, or Parks Department people, could take that on.
Okay. I'm going to hold questions because we got a whole, we got a whole nother part of this presentation to go. So we're going to let it wrap because I want to get through the agenda, yes. We can always ask at the end if we have time. So, two questions I have to think about, and I want to circle that back on. As you mentioned, there was no change to natural gas because it was already at 5%. What does it take to tack on an increase to natural gas, and why is it maxed out?
So, Mayor, thank you so much. So that actually, should I continue on? Because we do make that.
We'll cover that later.
Yeah, yeah, we do make that recommendation.
Then, as far as the .5%, as we're all talking about, there, you know, a staff person, a staff person's not going to cost $327,000. So the five, the .5% is basically a max, it could be a fraction of that .5% I'm suing, basically cover their salary, benefits, all that good stuff in the short term. It doesn't have to be 300 grand, I don't think, no, no one's going to cost that much. Correct?
Correct. We do not, the position would probably be at a management analyst level or a program coordinator level. We could imagine, so funding the position and then, like, have additional money for consultants to do studies or to implement the, implement the program, but no, the position would not cost that amount.
Okay. And then the last one, so if we, you probably didn't put it in the mix, but if natural gas did get a half a percent, I'd, you know, obviously they would raise more money, but could you also, at that point, if you don't need, for anything to say, if you don't need all that money, or you wanted to, you know, decrease the impact on residents, you can go, again, a fraction of the half a percent, that actually would, you could make it work. I would assume, you just put that in the mix, rejigger your matrix and get the, you know, ideally, if you're looking for $327,000, then you could go along, a half, you know, .5% on all the utilities instead of just three of the four.
Absolutely. Mayor, thank you so much. So one of the reasons this is under the short-term recommendation is because these are some of the easiest things to do very quickly. And so to do more, especially natural gas is the one where you would have to create a franchise fee to be able to go above that. And currently, the only franchise fees that the city of Tualatin has is with PGE and with Waste Management, if I'm remembering correctly, going a little bit from memory here. And so, for the longer term, we do provide some additional analysis as one of the options is to enter into franchise fees with the other utilities so that you can go beyond, and everyone is, is treated somewhat equally. There's still different levels because electricity is only 3.5% right now, and natural gas is 5%. And, and so if you increase everybody at the same rate, then there's still that bit of disparity.
All right. So we're going to do, I want you to proceed to the next part, and then people still have questions left over. I want to get to the end of this, and they will pepper you with more questions.
Thank you very much. Can you put it forward? And one more. All right. So there were three additional longer-term bits of analysis that we did, and so, and this is really for additional funding to be able to implement additional actions in your climate action plan. I will say, as some of the, the conversations that we had with staff, kind of even before we entered a contract to do this work, was really thinking about what are the climate action plans and what should be your priority, because you probably don't have enough revenue to be able to implement all 146 actions all at once. And so thinking about kind of what makes sense. And so, but, you know, the, the task for, that was given to Echo Northwest was to really look at those short-term, but as we were doing that evaluation, we also, there was some of that information that had kind of implications for longer-term considerations. And so, we did do the math on if you increased all of the utilities, electricity, natural gas, telecommunications, and waste management, by 1.5%, and how much revenue could you potentially raise, and about $1.2 million. We also looked at a 3-cent gas tax, and, and that definitely has a nexus between where emissions are coming from and, and then having that impact and being able to pay for the mitigation for that in transportation. And we estimated that those revenues would be about 2, a little under $250,000. And then another potential fee would be increasing your transportation development tax, surcharged by about 5%, and then that would raise roughly $70,000. And I won't go into all of the detail, and I want to be conscious of time, but we did do an evaluation of, you know, how much money it would raise, that advocacy and administrative ease, the flexibility and stability, and each of these things kind of have both pros and cons related to them. I think we've talked a lot about the right-of-way or franchise fees, the gas tax, as we see more people that are purchasing electric vehicles, then fewer folks are actually paying into the fuel tax, and you And you especially see higher-income people that have an electric vehicle compared to lower-income folks. And so just thinking about who's actually paying for that tax and the equity implications of that. And, and just the ability to be able to fund additional things. I guess I did want to say, we were intrigued in the report that was submitted in the council packet. There's about, I think, seven other revenue fees that we did look at. And we were really intrigued by Memphis, Tennessee's round-up, the utility roundup. And we had looked at that, and we were hoping we would be able to include it. But when we were looking at the administrative ease, the ability for the city to actually do that rounding up, the technology that you currently use does not make it easy. And so we didn't quite feel, I mean, Sheryl can talk to this too. It was hard to make that one of the top tier because it was going to be pretty complicated. And it wasn't clear that the technology that's currently in place and how that billing goes out, that it would be feasible to do like the city of Memphis was doing. And they have a, it's an opt-out program, and that gets into some of the behavioral economics. But it always gives people who feel like that is something that they didn't want to do, the opportunity to opt out. And that program had actually started with an opt-in and had relatively low participation. But when they switched it, it was, it was pretty positive. So they definitely tried both. And with that, I could take any additional questions about some of these other items.
All right. Councilor Brooks.
I have a general question. I just want to follow up with the last conversation too. I just want to, there's, I mean, Tuolotin made the news not long ago because we're one of the hottest spots in our region. And that has to do with the lidar mapping of trees, et cetera. So just because we have wetlands and trees doesn't mean that we're doing great here. And this includes like our neighbor's Tiger, et cetera, et cetera. We were one of the hottest, very hottest spots in our whole region, like number one. So I think people should know how we're doing right now. And the second thing I want to say was, when we read the climate action plan and the work that's been done by scientists, we understand that off-gassing is the number-one thing from commercial buildings. And the second thing is, is the gas and carbon from cars. So I think those two things are important to understand as far as when we prioritize some of the stuff. And another reason why it shows that we need expertise, because we have these materials right in front of us, and still they're hard to understand. And then finally, I'm just wondering, because we have a big conversation in this, in this city historically around capacity building for the city and also with some of the revenue streams might, that might be changing in the current climate and condition politically, how much flexibility do some of these interventions have around utilizing for things other than this particular position?
Councilor Brooks, thank you so much for your question. Definitely the right-of-way fees and franchise fees probably have some of the most flexibility. The gas tax and the transportation development tax are going to be dedicated towards transportation. There are definitely actions in your climate action plan. And I, I haven't done an in-depth analysis, but I would be surprised if you wouldn't need more than what's been listed here to be able to implement those particular actions. So this, this, these are just some examples. And as you're continuing to think about in, you know, your, your future budgeting cycles, how to pay for climate action, this does give you some additional ideas on how you potentially could.
Thank you.
Councilor Reyes.
Thank you. So several questions from, it just might sound silly, but please pardon my ignorance in a lot of this stuff. If we add a franchise fee, do we, can we select which of these companies can be, I know you said something about gas, that's already capped. But I'm thinking of like essentials, like people that really need, you know, and then we don't want to, like for instance, gas and electricity power. People need power to, to live and they need. So I'm thinking like, can we like decide, just like on telecommunications? Because that's more like, maybe they want to have cable or not, or, you know, or can they, can we choose that? Or does it have to be franchise fees for everybody? I'm just curious. Does that make, I don't know, let me rephrase the question if that's, if that's okay. So we have these four franchise fees, four companies that are in that franchise fees, or six, I don't remember, PGE was one of them, and all those companies. If we, can we decide which of those we want to add that tax? Or does it have to be all of them or nobody? Like, I'm just wondering.
Councilor Reyes, thank you so much. I believe that, and I might ask your finance manager to correct me if I am wrong. I do believe you have to do it by utility. So if it's the electric utility that, and I am just not positive about, like, is it just PGE that is in the city of Tuolotin? Or are there other utility players? Or is it just natural, you know, Northwest Natural for natural gas? So it might be only, if it's only one company, then everybody who has that service provider, like it's, it's basically the same thing if you put a, a utility fee on electricity. And so...
I think her question is, you have the four categories.
You have the four, yeah.
You have the four franchise types.
Yes.
Could you just put on telecommunications and that's the other three?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Because my point is that what is essential for needs, right? People need certain things. But when it comes to like cable or streaming, that's a different addition into my, like, I can choose not to have that at home. But I do have my essentials, which is electricity, gas, and I will not freeze during this time or I'm not going to die in the summer. So, so there's those things. I'm just thinking that way, just as we are thinking of adding which, what, who to tax, right? And then my other, thank you for that. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to get that question out there the right way. The other one was on the opting in and opting out. Can people, can the utility company opt you in? And then it is up to the consumer or the person that's paying the bill to opt you, to opt yourself out, like self-opt out? But you're opting automatically?
Councilor, thank you for that question. I would say that when we were looking at the fees, we were looking at the, the utility roundup was a little bit different. It's, we were looking at the specific utilities that the city manages. And so that is storm water, water...
Sewer and water.
Yeah. So we were looking at rounding up those utilities because the city controls them. You would, to do it for a different utility would be much more complicated. And it was at a level, and that's what we saw when we looked at Memphis, is that they rounded up the utilities that they controlled. To do any other kind of utility, you would have to have an agreement with the utilities themselves. And I think that, we haven't had any of those conversations, so I can't even surmise what that would be. But it would be much more complicated.
It's the ones that the city, you get your city bill.
Like water, yeah, yeah.
It's the city bill that you would be able to opt in or round up.
But Councilor Reyes and Councilor Pratt's points, could there be an option that's collected by the city on the monthly bill? That's an additional fee. That's, that has nothing to do with the franchise agreements, has nothing to do with electricity. It's someone opts in for $4 a month to go towards the climate action plan, and it's billed on the utility bill.
On the city bill?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, that's a much cleaner one.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. We could do a flat fee. We just, what, what our system will not allow for is the, the roundup. So it's like, if your bill is $149.09, like, we can't round that up. But we could say, like, you add a dollar or how, or 49 cents, we can do a flat.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'll make sure to look down here.
So knowing in 401K plans, people, when you have, like you mentioned, the opt-out, you get a lot more participation. Could we have an opt-out type option?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and then, oh, you were talking, so this can work. And this can work with the current system you have?
Yes.
Okay. But that system, if we wanted to make changes, that would be a perfect example of where extra funds can be used.
Yes.
Revitalize a system like that.
Yes.
Okay. And then I just want to bring up the gas tax. I have really mixed feelings about it because it is somewhat inequitable, but I feel like it really, and I know it won't last forever, but given the current federal climate, I think it's going to slow down a little here. And it really promotes, you know, efficiency and climate. And it might help someone if they're deciding between a gas car and maybe a hybrid or something to make, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's really pushing the, what we're, the, looking at it from a climate way. So in that way, I support it.
Yeah, Councilor Pratt, I think you make a good point that there's a very direct nexus between emissions from vehicles and increasing the tax to be able to tax that. Know that, I mean, we definitely understand that people are looking at what is the overall cost of gas, and they definitely have options that are close by. And so if the perception is that gas is more expensive in the city of Tuolotin, there's always the possibility they will look at, you know, nearby, less expensive gas. I think that's something that, that folks already do. And also, I guess, I would definitely track what is happening at the legislature and the passage of a new transportation bill. And I know that they're, they've been looking at for the longest time, the road usage charge.
I don't think that's happening.
That could be. There's a lot of uncertainty out there.
Other questions? Councilor Sacco.
Question, just a couple wrap-up comments for me. So I am in support of the, the, I guess it wouldn't be a roundup now, but just a flat fee, opt-out. I think that that is a great solution. Be curious to know if that's being done in other cities and what sort of revenue that's bringing in. I know the Memphis example that you had, but, and then I was, before this meeting, I was really interested in the gas tax. But after, you know, and I get the, the relationship between the gas tax and trying to lower folks' folks' usage on gas. However, I think most low-income folks don't have, they're, they're not weighing the option between a gas car and an electric car. And like, you know, some folks that are, that have higher income. And so that one really weighs on me as far as the equitability on the gas tax. And then just doing some really rough math, it seems like the gas tax and the right-of-way, at least what I think is a normal driving amount, would probably equal about $2 as well. So I kind of lean towards then the, the right-of-way. It just seems like a more equitable way where everybody's paying an amount. It seems consistent, where it's a constant revenue stream. It's not going to fluctuate. It seems relatively easy to implement as well. So I had leaned towards that as a favorable option in addition, or as a, in conjunction with, I don't know, or if it's either or with the opt-out option as well.
Councilor Gonzalez.
I'm just curious. In the green lodge tax, the local option levy, the stormwater, the utility and the utility roundup, how old is your information? Because I'm still seeing that Tuolotin has a $15 grant in here for the electric CFIs. And was there more cities and states that would have applied to each category? Or were those it? You have Ohio, Pennsylvania, on the various categories. Was, was there more? Are you trying to be concise?
Councilor Gonzalez, thank you for the question. I will say that we conducted a scan. It was a relatively short period of time and a modest budget to, to do this work. So I don't want to imply that this was a comprehensive analysis of how, you know, jurisdictions across the country are funding climate action. But we did, in the, the document itself, we tried to, you know, show those citations and show where we were finding this particular information. And we definitely looked around the region and trying to understand how people do, how they implement and fund climate work in Oregon and definitely within the Portland metropolitan region. And then looking at some of those other kind of creative ways, innovative ways that they've been funding across the country. And so I hope that we had kind of a, a good kind of like medium spot. I don't want to imply that it was comprehensive.
Do you find that this information is maybe six months outdated? Because obviously the geopolitics have changed significantly across the nation. And, and looking at these states, I mean, some of the states that you cited are very much in, in line with Oregon's geopolitics. So did that weigh in much into your reporting, how you reported this? Because of that, I'm not seeing a lot of states that are much bigger than, than we are with vast landscapes. And I don't see any citing here. I, I only see sightings of states that are very much like our own state in beliefs.
Yeah, I...
I was hoping to have on the pros and cons that you would provide at least a little bit of those other sites, you know, other states that are doing it differently than what you're suggesting.
Yeah. Councilor, thank you so much. I think, you know, one of the reasons you might find more evidence from states that are like Oregon or communities that are, you know, kind of somewhat similar to Tuolotin, is that you, you find more information from places that have prioritized climate action plans and have really focused on achieving those kinds of resources. And so sometimes it is hard to, like, in our scan, we were looking for, you know, articles and information where they were really championing, you know, here's the thing that we did and here's how we did it. I think there's probably many more that are, you know, we're going through our capital improvement plan and we're going to be dedicating, you know, before we dedicated funds one way and now we're going to dedicate them just a little bit differently. And that's not always champion and, and easy to find unless you're really looking for it. And so in that sense, I think you're probably right. I think there are additional things that communities across the country are doing, and it's subtler. But our research was not in such a way to be able to easily kind of find that information.
Councilor President Pratt.
The one you didn't delve into but was listed that interested me too was the green lodging tax. And it, I would just be curious, like, if that can, I mean, because that's got to be fairly equitable, because, you know, the people that travel generally can afford more than our lowest-income people. And just, and then a comparison of our fees to like surrounding cities to make sure we're not putting a burden on the business owners either.
Absolutely. Counselor, that particular fee that we were looking at was used in Hawaii. And I was trying to see if we had actually said which island or if it was all of the islands. But they definitely made a very strong nexus between the impact of visitors and the, the impact of climate change on the islands themselves. And so, so their green tax is much higher and their volume of revenue related to that was, definitely gave them additional, they just, their tourism is so much larger than the city of Tuolotin's. We did look, and I just don't have those numbers in front of me, but I know in our first round of analysis, we were looking at the, the lodging tax revenue that the city of Tuolotin currently has. And it's, it's very modest. There's not so many hotels compared to some of the other places around, around the state. And so the potential to be able to generate the revenue that you would really kind of, like, it was just, it was a small amount.
So the administrative costs might outweigh the amount. Got you.
And in Oregon, 70% of the lodging tax has to be used for tourism. And it's so restrictive that it just doesn't bring in much money.
We could put in those water filling stations at the parks.
In Hawaii, like, you, you can really argue so many of the places where you want to do the, that kind of mitigation work, it feeds right into the, the tourists that are coming to visit, so.
Other questions? So I'm going to circle back on the TLT, even though it may not be a lot of money, because some of these things are only $60,000, $70,000. The TLT, we're at 2.5% now. I know the cap is 3. What kind of dollars were you looking at?
On the transient lodging tax?
Mm-hmm. Because I know our T, our transient lodging tax is lower than the cities around us. We did it on purpose. But what was the impact of, the second question is, on that, that fraction of what we can increase is now subject to the 70%, is it? We can use it...
Oh, it is subject to the 70, 70%.
So we only can use 30% of the fraction we raised it by?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that's way less than $60,000. All right. And as far as the gas tax, you know, Tiger does 3 cents, King City... Now, as far as the gas tax, you know, Tiger does 3 cents, King City's, I think, a penny. Wilsonville used to have one, but the last time I drove through Wilson, it looked like it disappeared.
Yeah.
My question is, on all, through those three cities, it had to go to the ballot for a gas tax. So, we'd have to go to the ballot here, right? So, most cities, this is a hard-fought battle to even get it passed. And given for what it's going to be used for, I could see that being an issue. So, I think gas tax is kind of out, in my mind, because even the one penny ones, King City had three, four shots at it before they finally got it, for a penny. And King, and Tiger's making bucks because it's a Costco, at 3 cents a pop. So, I agree with Council Sacco. I'm going to wrap up here. It seems like we're all leaning towards right-of-way, our majority's leaning towards right-of-way fees, not messing with gas tax, or TDTs, or building fees. We're a good point about people opting in, or having to opt-out. Council Reyes is a good point of, you know, if we want to do franchise fees, maybe targeting the ones that are not required, if you will, you know, for life. So that, the whole idea, again, is to minimize impact on our residents, raise the funds, in my mind, initially just for a staff person, without a big impact to their community. Is that a good summary, or?
Yeah, and if I, if I were to choose, it would be the telecommunications, and it would be the waste management, because part of our, in the climate action plan, we talked about, most waste is actually the banana that you leave out, and nobody eats. So, that just goes directly to, yeah, but people don't do it, so.
I think, did you have, and then, oh, you want to answer it?
Oh, I totally lost it. Oh, when you were saying, just cover a staff person, I would ask that there be a little, not a ton more, but at least some more, so there could be, they could actually have some actions they could do.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the goal, obviously, is to, you know, I'm going back to the short-term result, like, the 320-odd grand, with some kind of mix that we all can support getting there, with minimal impact to the community. And Council Hillier.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify about the telecommunications. We have students who are homeschool and different things. I would be very concerned about that, just the dynamics of that tax, because we have, we have one-to-one learning for a lot of students with that, and I'm worried about Wi-Fi just, and I don't understand telecommunications completely, but that would concern me to raise that particular one.
Council Brooks and Council Reyes.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much for the work, and it's been really interesting and helpful to understand all these options. As far as electricity, I feel like it pushed back a little bit. I feel like we have, because of the way that we're looking at this for solving a problem, it seems like we have a negotiating rooms, room with something like a PG and electric company, because it's pushing customers in that direction. That's one thing around that kind of a, of a piece. The other thing I would ask is, instead of deciding that we're just doing, like, this particular fee for this position, to look at, if we have these capacities, what different options do this, does this city see itself being able to do, so that we understand, instead of having to try to do it five times? If we have something that is a lot lower than cities around us, as far as our fees, and I want to be really clear that a fee is not a tax, I think it's really an important distinction, but that the fee is, they're, you know, what I'm saying. So, and then, the final thing is, with, with parity, and I know this is way off what we're talking about, but there's like, a bill right now around focusing how much consumers spend for these giant businesses that process, like, all the Bitcoin stuff and all that, and that we all pay this rate that helps cover that. There's legislation right now that's, they're addressing it, that would actually make a difference to consumers in a big way. This, to me, it's like, if the average cities around us are, are charging 5% to 10%, and we're charging 3.5%, why wouldn't we be with the market? I just wouldn't understand that, so, I, I just, yeah. Those are the thoughts I have around it, because I, I'm always for more information is better.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, I, I support getting someone to help us with the climate action plan as well. I, I also would like to, I saw when I was reading and studying for this, writing grants, and I think that we should not forget those as well. So, as things, as we get these grants, maybe relieve people from paying those fees, or the taxes, or, so I think we, we should always continue to explore that. I was a little bit confused with the building permits, because as I was reading, it says that it's generally supported by, by donors, I mean, sorry, I work for donors all the time, so, by voters. And is that in addition? I'm wondering, where is that, is that part of the right-of-way, or is that something separate from this whole? So, why are we not thinking of building fees, permit fees, or charge?
I'm fine with adding fees on commercial development, but I think on housing, we're just adding that much more cost to, you know, already overburdened prices.
Right, on commercials, I'm sorry, on commercial building, I was thinking more, because they come, they do their, they do business here, then, you know, I can think of all the Amazon vans that I see out there. I'm not saying that it's bad, or, I'm just thinking maybe in the future, maybe some kind of fees and explore that as well. But for sure, grants and continue looking at those other revenues of income.
The, the issue of building permit fees is volatility. If you have permit, building permits coming in, you've got no money coming in. And then, and you know, and once, the one time money is gone, once the permit fees paid, the money is paid, and it's going, it's not reoccurring income, if you will.
It's not recurring, recurring, yeah.
It's this one-time money they get, and then, at a certain point, you know, building might stop because you're out of land. Especially on, you know, residential, almost going to be, you know, pretty much out on residential, and we always said, no residential. On manufacturing industrial, there's only so much capacity still out there.
But it could be a, not necessarily a long, long-term fix, but, but short-term for, like, 124.
Council Gonzalez, that is my comment.
I just wanted to clarify that, that, as a government, we're always charging our constituents' fees. We call it, we don't allow taxes, because, but they are fees. There's a fee for an inspection, there's a fee for a permit, there's fees for everything. Sure, we can distinguish because it has a different definition, but it's still a tax to our constituents. The money's still coming out of their pocket into our coffers. And we're still, and the city's still using those revenues to develop programs, pay for services rendered, and things like that. So, sure, they're not taxes per se, but they are fees, and they are, they are income reductions to everybody. Now, whether we agree with the fees or not, that's a whole different story. So, for me, it's a definitive no on increasing any kind of taxes for anybody. And when we go to pull it out to our businesses, you know, that impacts employment, that, when we look at site finders, and the looking at our economic cost of development to Tuolotin, you know, we are next to Portland, very expensive city to do business in. I mean, now, people are coming to Tuolotin because of our more favorable development programs. But as we begin to find ways to etch money out of our constituents, because it's just not what we're supposed to do, so.
Any other questions or comments? The final comment that I just had was, you know, in your packet, that the 1.5%, the average consumer, that would be $6 a month increase versus the 2, and that one, based on what I'm hearing here, it's way too high, that, you know, people are nervous about $2, going up to 1.5, sounds like it's, you know, not going to happen. So, that's just my public comment, because, yeah, we were nervous about raising, you know, garbage rates and stuff, $6, $6 a month increase. Now, you know, $2 is way more palatable, 6 is not going to happen by me, so. Council Brooks, and then, that'll be it.
Sorry.
It's gone. All right? Anything else? So, you have what you need? Oops, it's back.
Thank you. No, I was, Council Reyes brought up that point. I too don't think having something that's volatile to be totally off the table, to be thinking through how that could be utilized, especially since it's, commercial is the largest output of carbon, so it makes a lot of sense to me to not take it completely off the table. And I agree about the residential conversation, although, and, and I just keep thinking about the capacity for our community development department, and, because I think they work really hard, and a lot of this could be some really great changes to go with comprehensive planning and et cetera in the future. Thanks.
Sounds like, on the commercial industrial permit fee, we're open to listening to that, but not a residential.
Yeah, so I think we have a few things to follow up on and bring back to you, and we will debrief, and thank you for your feedback and your conversation. It was very helpful and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to, we have our proclamation request from NAMI of Clackamas County. There's no staff presentation. Did folks take a look at it? And, we have four folks, or more. We're okay with adopting, or accepting that request for proclamation for NAMI, or NAMI. Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to bring up that we do have an agency in the community whose youth come and talk about Prevention Week, which, and they also rounded in to National Mental Health Month, or Mental Health Awareness Month, excuse me. So, I'd like this body's input on potentially getting those groups to maybe work together to make something a little bit bigger for the community, and certainly not saying no to this, but it would be an opportunity for some collaboration from, especially resources from Clackamas County, that in my short time on council, I have, I, I understand that they have a longer history with our council. However, it wasn't something that I, since I've been on council, was aware of. So, I'd like any input.
Council Brooks.
I'm in support of that, and I, as far as for this year, I think doing NAMI would be great. I think the impact that NAMI has, not just in our community, but across the country, and the expertise and excellence in their work, is something that stands, that deserves to stand up for recognition. I think that reaching out to mental health agencies that work together and talking about how we could have a collaborative acknowledgement, or even work, would be a blessing.
That comes, I would suggest, yeah, approving it, but in the past, NAMI has actually been here, they're representative of NAMI, and maybe that's something you ask them for going forward, that, you know, work together or join proclamation in the future, all that good stuff.
Well, I was even thinking about, like, it's May, and so, there are a couple groups, several, that actually that are working on, actively working on this in our community already. And so, bringing that together before the May proclamation, so that it would be, you know, really impactful for everyone, and, and meaningful to each of the groups involved.
Sure. Council Reyes.
Oh, no.
Okay. So, we have four or five O's, all those in favor for the proclamation request? Aye. Looks like a majority, all right?
It's for May, right?
All right, yes, in May. That brings us to agenda review. Any questions? We're going to have a Eagle Scout here tonight, so I'm going to ask the Eagle Scout to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And then, any questions, concerns on the consent agenda, that someone would want an item removed? All right. We have no proclamations. Now, we have a couple announcements, but no proclamations. With that, we'll go ahead and start the city council roundup, if you will. We'll start with Council Gonzalez.
I have nothing new to report. Get quiet.
All right. Council Brooks.
Just a couple meetings since I've been back. We met with the PAB. When I first came on, we did a lot of work on, like, over about a year and a half, when Jenny Proctor was still Director there, around updating the grant review process. Due to some of the changes, the questions around diversity remain on the application. However, the tool for, for identifying that within the organizations themselves has been taken off. So, if anybody has further questions on that, it was kind of shocking after the work and the energy and the money that's been put into that. And I did talk about, you know, measurable outcomes that might be good in the place of those gaps, that are beyond equity, that have to do with organizational functioning. The other meeting, oh, and we will be having our set of interviews for the Community Development Block Grants and the ESGs. One applicant happens to be our city, so that's exciting. And that will be this Thursday. We'll be out in Hillsborough at 8:00 AM, all day. And then, I was at the Tuolotin Arts Advisory Committee Appointment, Meeting, and had the opportunity to get a sneak peek and meet our new Parks Director, which was great, who we also met in a earlier Arts Advisory Committee Meeting. I think it's, maybe he was doing his research, I don't know. And, so that was, that was nice. Looking forward to later talking about it. And then, we went through the final, the community voted on the traffic box reps, and we went through the final selection process, which is really exciting. Another great opportunity came up for the city, the Tuolotin, this hasn't been totally done yet, but the Tuolotin River Keepers proposed us to do some more stormwater drain work. And they actually run the program, and then, the Art Committee just helps select the spots in the art. So, it's kind of a win-win for the city. And so, that looks like the Arts Committee is up for doing that, so it looks like we might have some more stormwater drain art. I think that's all I've got.
Council Sacco.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. So, later tonight, I'm going to ask that we adopt a proclamation for a transgender Day of Visibility. But before I do that, I'm not going to do that till the end of the meeting, because I think there are some folks that want to come and speak to the council and share their reasonings for wanting us to adopt that proclamation. So, I'll let them speak, but I just wanted to tee it up for when they come and speak during public comment.
Council Hillier.
Nothing, thank you.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, no official meeting, thank you.
Council President Pratt.
Well, a lot of meetings got canceled, but I did have the Clackamas County Metro Coordinating Committee Meeting, and the one thing I'd like to point out, we talked about the Transportation Regional Flexible Funds. We talked about the grants for the cycle 2028 to 2030, and those are projects typically that are $8 million or less. And I noticed there was not any project for Tuolotin on there. And so, I'm just suggesting that maybe that gets looked at for the 31-on project, because I think that Nyberg Creek Trail, maybe 65th, there's, I think there's several projects that could probably qualify in our city, so, just putting the suggestion out there.
A handful of meetings. Reminder that on Fridays at noon, the LOC is doing the legislative update. It's usually not a full hour, takes about, usually 40, 45 minutes, but they pack it full of what's going on in Salem, what to look for, who you should reach out to, what bills they think might have- bills they think might have a significant impact to the city. So I find it enlightening to attend, so I, if you have a moment to do it, it's all over Zoom, because you can listen in the background while you're doing something else. Went to the WEA Board Meeting on the 19th, and the focus was on industrial land readiness with the new legislature. Remember, the old legislature passed something called SB4, which gave the governor certain flexibility on bringing lands into the UGB for manufacturing industrial readiness, especially what had to do with CHIPS. That bill, that law has expired, so the governor no longer has that ability. And the concern of the WEA and many of the folks in the development committee, in the development community, is that Oregon is not ready at all for industrial development and being able to compete against other states for those projects that are going on. They're envisioning a possible recession coming, and that doesn't bode well for Oregon if a recession comes. So the ideal is that they're going to throw together a work group in, with Metro, because if you recall, the, when Sherwood went through its UGB expansion, first thing Metro told them was that there is no lack of industrial-ready land, that we have, you know, thousands of acres of that in the metro area, which we're going to find out it really isn't because they're all like little 10-acre lots on slopes greater than 10%. So what WEA with Clackamas County is looking to do is form a work group to work with Metro to better identify what the real inventory is of industrial-ready lands and then come up with a plan and how the state can market it. They mentioned how Arizona and New York and, who am I spacing on, a third state, had spent 10 years on their industrial readiness plan, and that's how they're landing these things. Ohio, Ohio was it. And that when the next big project comes, Oregon has to be ready. It can't be scrambling, doing stuff. It has to be, okay, here's our plan, here's where you can be, here's the infrastructure we can put in. So I just want to give you a heads up that that's something that's going to be put together, and you're hoping in the next six months to have this work group work with Metro, with Clackamas County, you know, probably all the counties, and the state with Business Oregon to be ready for the next big project. Who knows what company it could be, wants to locate in Oregon and that we're an ideal site and not lose it to another state. Spent several hours in Salem on the 20th. We're at Sherlin and Megan, visiting quite a few representatives and senators. We saw Representative Noth, Representative Bowman, Representative Smith, Senator Wagner, Representative Walters. Met with staff in the House Speaker's Office, Representative Sanchez, and staff for Senator Jama. We did a little intercepted Representative Neuron in the hallway to talk to her, lobby her on our projects, and kind of stormed through the door of Representative Gamba's office, doing the mayor, playing the mayor card. We were down there pitching two projects, obviously Shade Structure, Veterans Plaza, and for the seismic resilient valves or reservoirs. Representative Walters already knew about it before we walked in. She's very supportive. Overall, there was, there was support for it, but the question that happened right now is that there'd be no commitment to any kind of projects or funding until May, till the revenue forecast comes in. And then the big cloud hanging over the legislature is the impacts of the present administration on Medicaid and Medicare. In the event they alter the monies or the funds or the schedules, it might blow a huge multi-billion hole in the state budget. So even though people were very supportive, you know, they're holding their cards close because they can't commit to anything because they have no idea what the state's budget's going to be like. But overall, I got a good feeling that, especially the shelter, who, what was it called? Budget dust? Who told us that? $235,000 is budget dust. The 1.7 million, a little bit more, but so my, I'm keeping my fingers crossed. And the person who's going to help us push it through is Representative Walters. Representative Walters has a very good reputation with her colleagues, and she's the one we have to keep poking and reminding, especially to get that done, because that would be a general fund ask versus being on the Christmas tree, Christmas tree bill, which is related to bond funding. And so the seismic valves could be on that. But there's a Water Caucus that is consolidating all the water-related projects, and we were told the list of items is up to $5 billion in the state for the Water Caucus. So they're trying to prioritize those projects throughout the state that they can fund. But I enjoyed going Thorn Run, did a terrific job of sending the appointments, showing us back and forth through the building, and very much thankful for that. And what else? And so on the 21st, again, legislative update, but it was fun. Went down to the Hilton in Portland for the reception honoring the Emperor of Japan's birthday yesterday. The council general invited a whole bunch of people. I was surprised how many people were there. Mayor Buck was there, Mayor Beatty of Milwaukee, Mayor Wilson of Portland got to speak. So it was kind of an interesting thing of the group of people that got together and the exposure was given to Japanese companies inside the rotunda and the impact of the billions of dollars of trade between Oregon and Japan. That's a very highly successful relationship. They feel very secure doing business in Oregon. They want to continue that relationship. And there was all kinds of sushi and stuff, and you could try it, Japanese ice cream. So it was a fun event to attend, and I'm looking forward to it next year. Have no idea with the Emperor's, what age he turned, but he does have a younger daughter. I sent, it's on Facebook and a picture of his wife, but happy belated birthday to the Emperor of Japan. Anything else? Okay, go ahead.
I have one thing to add. I just want to make sure everybody saw that, and thank you to whomever printed these out. We received some, some letters of support for the transgender day of visibility, and these are all printed out. And so I just want to make sure that everybody saw that. So, thank you.
Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the work session. We've got roughly a little over 20 minutes before our city council meeting. So go ahead, close this work session. We'll resume for city council at 7 o'clock.